Haven't seen you guys in a while. Good to see you.
Yeah, we're busy.
Well, I'm sorry, I'll tell you later. You guys also?
No, not really. We had some lobbying and things.
No.
And sold that. It would be a better option.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Planning Commission meeting tonight. We're certainly glad to see you here. We love to see the public here, especially friendly faces. We're going to start with a word of prayer from member Little, and then after that, if you would please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear kind, Heavenly Father, we thank thee for thy blessings of this community and grateful for those who are a part of it, grateful that we can meet together and pray that we may have thy Spirit be with us and help us to work through problems and help us to understand how we can make things work and also pray that we can do according to thy plan and help us to develop this community that everybody can benefit and enjoy it. In thy name we say, "A name of Jesus Christ," amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, assuming everyone's had a chance to review the agenda, any input? If not, we'll take a motion. Have a motion, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Any conflicts of interest from anybody on the Planning Commission for anything on the agenda tonight? Haven't seen none. We're going to move on to a period of public comment. So whenever we get an opportunity for the chairs to be filled, we always try and explain the process of what we're going through. I'm going to assume that not everybody here is a planning expert, and you can assume the same from us. No, that's not going to... We kind of know what we're doing. So, but what we do in the beginning of every meeting is open the opportunity up, open up the floor for people to come up with public comment for anything that's on the agenda that's not a... And we don't have any.
Number six.
Number six. Okay, so for public hearing for number six, the rezone, there will be an opportunity, a specific opportunity for public comment for that. There isn't an opportunity for the public to comment for the other issues on the agenda or the other applications on the agenda when we're discussing them. So we want to open that up in the beginning. So if you want to comment about anything in the county, how great the roads are, how great the weather is, how great the economy is doing, anybody? No? Anybody want to talk politics? The...anything like that, you're welcome to come up now and talk about that, except for item number six. We have a placeholder for you for that. Well, the only thing we ask is you come up, there is a microphone out there, just state your name and where you're from for the record, if you don't mind. Any other...something other than number six? The rezone?
I wanted to comment on item number...
Yeah, go ahead. If you wouldn't mind standing up, just so we can record you. YouTube's rolling, and we got the audio up there, that's why we ask people to stand up. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
I can.
All right. My name is Terry Lawrence, my wife Dora. And first let me thank you for letting me speak here tonight and sending me the letter, letting me know what's going on. So, we are here to...we are against the conditional use permit for the Como Springs expansion. And the reason for that is, in our opinion, the current owners of Como Springs have not been good neighbors, being very inconsiderate and disrespectful of their adjacent property owners. Now, that might, in this modern culture, it might sound a little bit silly, but we take it very seriously. And hopefully, and I think most people in Morgan County take it seriously, too. So, let me step back about 25 years. When the Heiner family sold Como Springs, there was a succession of new owners, each one of them with their own agenda as what they wanted to accomplish with that property. However, they've all followed a pretty similar pattern. They buy the property, they come in with big promises, big ideas, sell it to the county, whatever. And after a time, they start working on it, they make a few improvements, they do a little demolition here, a little construction there. And then, over time, for whatever reason, things aren't happening anymore. Maybe they run out of money, maybe they change their mind, who knows? Doesn't really matter. But their property just seems to decline back to its original state, kind of unkept isolation. This current owner is really no different. The most of the properties returned back to nature. We got some untidy piles of debris everywhere. There's even a huge pile of used tires on the property. Three years ago, the current owner began dredging the Como Springs ponds. During this project, he brought in four really loud diesel-powered water pumps to drain the pond. He ran these pumps for seven months. I repeat that, seven months. Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, including holidays and weekends. It didn't matter, they just ran and ran. These things were so loud, my wife and I had to move into another part of our house just to sleep. So obviously, I complained many times to the county, to the law enforcement, to the workers down here, and to the owner. And what's the best response I got from the owner? She says, "Well, I'll be done when I'm done. How about if I buy you a set of earplugs?" That's what I got from him. So after the dredging was done, as you can imagine, there's a pretty good pile of dirt left over. And so after it dried out, they had to do something with it. And so they decided to haul it all up to East Como Springs Road, practically right on Cam Sergeant's border with them. So during this long process, they created a lot of dust. Now, you can imagine, this is dirt that's been in there for eons, who knows what's in it. Served in this long process, there was no attempt at any kind of dust control. So now I move on to the county side of things. So, this has been traditionally called an RV park. Now, in actuality, it's really a defect to a mobile home park with no limits. There are people who have lived in there over the years for months at a time, even years at a time. No control whatsoever. And so now, our conditional use permit is coming up. I'm not sure what's going on there. Is it a reapplication? I don't know. But I think it's finally time for the county to decide just what is an RV park or recreational park. I mean, the definitions, they really need to be decided. What is it? And what does the county want? And once they do come up with a definition, what are the rules and ordinances going to be? And can they be effectively enforced by the government and law enforcement? Some of the main issues that we feel are really important are noise. That's a really big one. Now, as I read over their proposal, it's a pretty aggressive proposal, what they want to do over there. So that could be a really big issue. Another one is light emission. I remember when the two car dealerships were being built on the other side of the freeway, light emission was a really big deal, and the dealerships, I know, had to install some sort of shielding so that the residents behind them weren't so affected at night. Then you've got another issue, I think it was important, is what are the owner's liabilities in response to his customers' actions? I mean, there's all kinds of things to consider. Are they going to be having pets there? You know, animals are a big deal over there. I've had dogs come up out of those RV parks wandering around my property. I've even had the residents themselves hiking around, coming up the hill, thinking that my property is some kind of a trailhead. Then there's the issue of firearms, these are just common things, sense things. Over the years, there's been drug problems down there. So, I guess that's really all I wanted to cover. I didn't want to take a lot of time, but I know that the Planning Commission looks, tries to look long-term, by ten years down the road. What's this going to be? You know, some of these issues may sound a little self-serving here, but I'm thinking also about the wider community. You know, that property pretty much borders Morgan City. What's going to happen there? Anyway, that's all I need to kind of say.
Thank you, appreciate it. Just a quick note before someone else comes up. Sometimes it seems a little callous or cold when we say that we want to take comment here. What we're doing up here is we're taking notes when you guys say things, and then what we try and do is cover the topics that you ask during our own discussion. We don't want you to think that we're just listening to you. We are...we want to ask you ahead of time so that we can kind of answer some of these questions and work through it. So thanks for your...I appreciate it. Anybody else for public comment?
Yes, I'd like to...can I rebuttal that?
Are you the applicant?
I'm, yeah, representing.
Just wait for your time, sir, if you would. This is just a public comment period. We're going to have...we're going to give you an opportunity to answer all those things, absolutely. Sir?
Good evening. My name's Axel Zanelli. I live at 3965 Willow Creek Road, directly across from the Forest Service Fire Station. I had a few questions regarding the nine-line operation, one of those being the hours of operation, the number and type of aircraft, where and how these will be fueled, the financial impact to the county of fire service moving to nine-lines hangar instead of where they're currently residing. Also, the landscaping issue. In years past, or in the previous conditional use permit, landscaping was supposed to be provided along Willow Creek Road, and that never happened. I don't know why, but it's been a long time since that's taken place, and I'm just wondering if we're going to see the same thing happen again. And also, I am concerned about the lighting issue. If their operation is dawn to daylight, there shouldn't be any need for additional lighting. I don't believe any of the hangars will let it down now. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any other public input? Sir?
I'd like to comment on item number six.
Yes, sir.
I'm Marlon Brooks. I live at 1380 North Morgan Valley Drive.
So, there's going to be a special time just for you to talk to item number six? If you wouldn't mind just holding our comment up. It's going to seem weird, but if nobody else has public comment, we're going to discuss it and go into public hearing specifically for item number six. Thank you. It seems a weird thing, but Utah Code has, for public hearings for legislative decisions, we have to actually open up for a public hearing, so there's a very specific time for some of those issues. Anything else for public hearing for anything other than item number six?
Hi, Michelle Lyman, Mountain Green. I just had some comments on item number eight, the nine-line. I serve on the airport board, and so I have a little bit of information already that Buster's prepared for us when he brought it in front of the airport board. When he did bring it in front of the airport board, we were under the assumption that there were five, what are they called, ERCs available, water-wise, for the development left of the airport. What has been developed so far through the county commission? When that was approved, they were still under the assumption that there were five hookups left. Miscommunication between the airport board president and the water company, there are actually only three hookups that were left. And so with the development that they passed already with the hangars, there is a half of one of those left. We...I have come before the county commission and asked, with a vegetation buffer that the gentleman just spoke about, long history of that, 20 years ago, there was an agreement between the developer and the county that because the homes are so close to the airport, if the airport, any future development was going to happen, the county was supposed to put in a vegetation buffer to mitigate any aesthetic negative things that it would bring to the homeowners across the street from it. That started, but was never completed. Back a few months ago, that was brought before the county commission, and they looked at it and unanimously said, "You know what? We will finish that off. We do look at that and know that that's not, hasn't been completed." And all five of them agreed to look at that again and have decided, even funding, and there's a lot of things in place, that that's going to go forward. My concern is, as we're approving the nine-line with the amount of water that we have, the half that was left would be just enough to do the vegetation that was already agreed on. We talked to the water company, and there is additional ERC that can be purchased. And so my concern is, is that going to be purchased by the developer that's developing that? Or is that something that the county's going to purchase? But that's something that I think needs to be decided in place before decisions made on that. And with that being said, and I know we talked to Buster about this a little bit already, we're hoping, as far as the community that lives very close to that, that the vegetation buffer that's going to be put into place up until the gate, which is across from the Fox Hollow sign, we're hoping that the nine-line will continue that so it will be, look good altogether. But my biggest concern is to make sure that we have the ERC available for his development and don't take away from that half that is left that should be put already into the vegetation buffer that is agreed on already.
And you're on the airport board?
Yes.
Are you going to be here for, when we get to that? You just stay afoot?
Yes.
We may have some questions to ask, if you don't mind.
Sounds good, thanks.
Appreciate that. Anyone else?
Yeah, Sean Bestrom. I just want to say that I'm in favor of the nine-line. I think it's an awesome opportunity for us to bring additional tax revenue to this low impact. I think it's better than adding four or five more hangars to that area with more traffic and more aircraft, so it makes more sense to kind of reduce that, reduce the noise, have low impact. I think anytime that, I think we struggle as a county to provide or get great tax revenue, you know? I think that's one of the problems we have. I've been up here 23 years, I've been flying out of the airport for about 23 years, and so I think anytime that we can provide that commercial opportunity and get tax revenue that's low-impact, I think it's great. I agree with Michelle and Axel, I think it's great to continue to improve and establish value for the area. We don't want the airport to go away, we don't want the airport to be a sore, you know, we don't want it to look bad. So I think with the growth, I think with the commercial that's coming in, I think it's important to continue to increase value in the area. I live right there above the airport. I think Buster's development is, it's going to bring value. I think it's, looks like it's designed right and designed well, but I think that we need to continue to increase value. It's going to be hard to stop the growth, so whether we have a bunch of hangars, a bunch more hangars come in there, or a couple of hangars like Buster proposed, and I think it would be better for everybody, I think it's a valid concern, noise, and, you know, adding 20 more aircraft on the field doesn't make a lot more sense than that small airport, but Buster won't have a lot of impact. So, I just want to say that I think it's great. I think anything we can do to help bring value to the county or to Mountain Green specifically is a good thing, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'm Scott Forsberg. I live on Willow Creek Road as well, and none of us want to see the airport go away. That's not what we're trying to do. We all knew it was there when we moved in, we've actually kind of enjoyed it over the years, so that's not what we're about. What we want to do is, we want to make sure that the airport is developed as an asset for the people who live there and for the county in general. So that means proper planning, proper development, it means taking into consideration all these other things, rather than haphazard development or development that is vaguely outlined and promised and then, you know, we don't see the follow-through. So that's what we're mostly concerned about. So when we see a development like nine-line, I think Sean's probably correct, I think it could be lower impact and more hangars and other things, which is great. We want to make sure it's done right. We want to make sure that it's done in a way that increases the long-term value of the airport itself and the property that surrounds it. We're also concerned, to some extent, that nine-line replacing the Forest Service hangar, that something might come into the Forest Service hangar which has greater impact. So it's not just the fact that nine-line itself might have low impact, you also have to look at what happens when they move the Forest Service helipad and what's in there further up the road. So what do you do with that building? What do you do with the revenue? Because now, some of the revenue goes to nine-line instead of the county itself. So how do you balance the interests of the existing Forest Service installation with what's going on at nine-line? I'd just like to make sure that there's a plan for that, that people know what it is, that we agree to it, that we follow through on it, rather than just letting things proceed and hoping for the best later on. So our concern is just having a good plan in place, making sure that things like light mitigation are there, that there is landscaping and other things that are taken into consideration, that there's not too much traffic right at that, you know, critical little junction there in front of Fox Hollow, which could be problematic for people. And Willow Creek itself has gotten a lot of traffic lately, and people tend to drive fast on there because it's not just residential use. Most people who live in a neighborhood and drive through a neighborhood tend to be, you know, more considerate about driving slowly, but people who are using it for other purposes don't drive as slowly, and we've had some issues there. So how do we address these things before the approval? That's the whole reason, as I understand it, behind what a conditional use permit is, right? It's conditional. So what are those conditions? How are they described? How are they enforced? We just want to be part of that, we want to understand what it is. We're not trying to keep people from developing things, we just want to make sure the conditions are conditions that balance the long-term value of the properties surrounding the airport and the airport itself. And that's really our point of view. While I'm at it, I'd also like to talk about just the, you know, on the other side of the road there, on Cottonwood Canyon, where we have the, I believe it's called the short landing properties there, and they're looking at those little units. I just want to make sure that a couple of things happen there, too. The example that I would give of where maybe that planning wasn't done to the extent that it should be early on, is in the storage units that are right at the end of Willow Creek Road where it meets Cottonwood Canyon. They were given a variance to put those up. The variance allowed them to build within five feet of the easement. Now, not only does that restrict view lines, and specifically, if you're coming off of 5800 and you're trying to turn at that stop sign, you can't see very far because those storage units are in the way. It's also, of course, a visual problem for the people who live there, and there's no attempt at all to create any kind of landscape barrier on the other side of that large concrete wall, which is, you know, nine or 10 feet tall. So, they were given a conditional use permit and a variance with really no considerations at all. It was just allowed to be done. I want to make sure on the other side of that corner that there are similar reviews and considerations put in place. Are they obeying the setbacks, or is it a five-foot setback? Should be a 30-foot setback, that was what was designed there originally, because it's a buffer zone between that commercial area and the residential area. Are they going to landscape it? Do they have light mitigation control in place? These are the kinds of things that we like to see. We're not trying to stop development, we just want it to be done in a responsible way that's respectful of the people who are there, and frankly, is in line with the original intent of the zoning, which was as a buffer zone, not as a pure commercial zone. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? No? Okay. We're going to move out of public comment, and we're going to move on to item number six on our agenda. Hi.
Okay, so this application's for the amendment to the Morgan County zoning map. The proposal is to rezone 13.81 acres located off of Studdard and Morgan Valley Drive. It's currently zoned 820 with agriculture, and the request is zoned to RR5. The proposed zoning map change complies with the intent of the Morgan County General Plan policies and future light use designation. And the adjacent properties will not be impacted, seeing that the RR5 zoning adjacent to the property is zoned as that. If the applicant wants to add anything to it?
Yeah, applicant's...the applicant wants to speak?
Ken Ridley Spock. I live in that area there. We're just changing the zoning to RR5, which is in the master plan, so, to accommodate a little more growth. Anybody got any questions?
Questions to the applicant now, do you want to do the public hearing and then...okay. Yeah, we'll do public hearing, I'm sure we'll have questions for you, sir. Okay, so now, this is, we're about to go into public hearing for item number six. So we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That seemed weird, but we're now in public hearing for item number six on this agenda. So this is an opportunity for anybody to speak to item number six, this is rezone. Pardon?
Marlin.
Yeah, Marlin.
Yeah.
As I said before, I'm Marlon Brooks. I live at 1380 North Morgan Valley Drive. Ken lives behind me at 1340 North Morgan Valley Drive, about 200 feet off Morgan Valley Drive. That's an estimate. I'm here, I guess, representing some of the neighbors who can't be here. We're against homes being built behind us. I think if you'll talk to Ken, he moved in here about 20 years ago. He moved from the city to get into the country, and now he wants to bring the city back to us. And so we're against it. I understand he has a plat that I have never seen, some of my neighbors have seen it. I understand that, I assume this would be called a subdivision. For a subdivision, my understanding is you have to have an in and an out. I know Ken has an in, but I don't know of another access to that, you know, as far as fire engines getting in and out or whatever, so. So I guess that's my say. I'm just, we're just against it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for public hearing? Nope, haven't seen none. Take a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're now out of public hearing for item number six. Planning Commission discussion. Start on this end, if you guys want?
I just have a question about the acreage that was mentioned earlier. Do you want to bring that up, or you guys?
Yeah.
So, if the property gets rezoned RR5, then the remaining parcel doesn't have at least 20 acres that's left in a 20, so it would be a non-conforming lot. So, we shouldn't make non-conforming lots.
Can I clarify?
All right, I agree.
So, he's not dividing the property yet?
Right.
So the nonconformity would only occur once a subdivision plat is submitted? So you can't really talk about the nonconformity there? You can say that there's potential for it, and that there should be 20 acres left in the 820 zone, or just rezon the entire thing to RR5?
Where is the remaining? Where is the remaining? Yes.
There's actually 23 acres left.
Could, I don't know if you can pull it up on the?
If she gets the plat, it's 23 acres.
Okay.
So?
Then part of it's up on top. Can I show you where that is?
Yeah. There is a pointer up there. I don't know if it, probably easier for you to just point to it on the screen.
Go back up to the, yeah, I'll be right. I'm going to open up the.
He's going to open up the actuals, the current zoning, and you'll be able to see it. This is a good plug for the public as well. Anybody can go here on the public site and look at this stuff. I'm not saying it's easy to find.
It's a little easier.
It's easier.
I've only been here 12 days.
You're doing quite well. Located.
So the county assessor shows this parcel is 32.47 acres.
Right.
If you're rezoning 13.81 acres to RR5, that leaves 18 and change.
Yeah, what it is is part of this is going to be part of the last lot because we bring the plat.
So this part right here? Because that's already zoned RR5. Is that a problem?
Do I need to diszone it for 20 seconds?
No. You can either reduce, I guess what she's saying is when you subdivide, and I almost think for a commissioner, so correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, which is not yet. And it's important for the public as well to understand, this is a, this is an application for a rezone.
Right, so this is the rezone. We're not talking about subdivision. So.
That would have to happen.
Rezoning to RR5, the portion that you're recommending rezoning, there's not technically an issue right now, but when you kind of subdivide it, if you divide the RR5 portion in the five-acre lots or whatever, the remaining portion won't be 20 acres of the A20. So her question, my understanding is, why aren't you rezoning the entire property to RR5 so there isn't a non-conformity when you do subdivide? Or why not reduce it so that the remaining portion in the A20 zone stays 20 acres? Is that correct?
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, the problem is the master plan doesn't allow.
Okay, so the general plan is general in nature. It provides no entitlements whatsoever. So rezoning this to RR5 would be up to the discretion ultimately of the county commission, which technically doesn't have to follow the general plan exactly because it's a guidance document.
So do I need to come back in with a new application?
No, I don't think you need to come back in for a new application. But you need to state whether you want to just rezone the entire property to RR5 to avoid any non-conformity. There's an argument to allow that and to out RR5 adjacent to it already. Or just let them know you would reduce it, reduce the total to leave 20 acres in the A20. It's your application, so you need to propose what you want.
I'll probably come in with a new application.
I don't think you need to submit a full application. I just think you need to update the existing application and state that your intention is to rezone the entire property to RR5.
Or reduce by two acres of the application. So that, so they, so you don't create a non-conforming lot later when you do subdivide?
Yeah, it just doesn't work because my personal home needs to be five acres.
So we could just do a postponement.
While he amends his application.
Give you some time to think it through and amend the application?
Yeah, and when you make that decision, we can then renotice it according to what your proposal is.
Sure. Because I do remember the 20-acre, but that 23-acre lot will be part of the RR15 zone. But it'd be 23 acres, and it'll be its own lot.
Yeah, I don't have the total dimensions. I just have what the system.
I'm just giving you the updated ones. I wasn't, I didn't think about the R15 when we came in and got that piece. And we bought that three acres from there. That was not too long ago when we had to rezone all that, so.
So it sounds like the best way forward.
Sounds like we need to postpone.
Yeah, and then you can work with staff to kind of reword the verbiage. We'll renotice and.
So is two weeks long enough or do you need more time than that?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I move to postpone indefinitely item number six, the Reynolds block rezon.
Did you say indefinitely?
Definitely.
Definitely.
Oh.
To a specific time.
Yeah, it's to date, sir.
Yeah. To our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is July 28, 2022.
We have a motion to postpone to the next meeting, 20 July. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Item number seven. Golden Hills Estates.
Wait for him.
No, you're right.
The applicant is seeking approval of a small subdivision final plat located in section 1, 2, 3, and 11 of Township 2 North, Range 3 East, off of Highway 66 in East Canyon. It is currently zoned for MBU 160. It will consist of four lots ranging from 116.01 to 160.11 acres in size. Each lot will be responsible for their own well development, and each lot will use on-site individual wastewater system. There will be a private lane across lots 5 and 7 and a private street across lots 4 and 6 that will connect to Highway 66. Looking at the last planning review, per that review, it was requested that a copy of the CCNRs be submitted. That's something that's still needed. Also, staff is stating that the improvement assurance should only be for these four lots and not for all the phases as a whole. And that any, and that a temporary turnaround easement is needed for in-between phases. Yeah?
I'm just looking at now. Any questions? Go ahead.
So the conditions you just mentioned, you don't have listed as a condition we have to add.
Yeah.
Can you?
For the CCNRs?
The CCNR, yeah.
And that was it?
The other one should be that the improvement assurance should only be for these four lots. And I think that is.
The improvement what?
Assurance.
Insurance.
What is that?
It's basically the bonds and assurances for the streets and the road improvements.
Oh.
The road.
So we will collect that only for this phase. Since there's multiple phases, as additional phases come in, we would collect the bonds and assurances for those phases at the time that they're.
Okay.
My question, yeah, you called it a small subdivision, but it's really just a phase.
Yeah, it's a.
Phase one.
Right.
Of the subdivision, yes.
Of the already approved subdivision.
Of already approved subdivision, well, preliminary.
Preliminary, yeah.
Yeah. This is just a final for that phase?
Yeah.
So we captured all the other conditions?
Well, I remember, on the plat, it does say remainder parcel. And we don't have remainder parcels. I think it should be future phases.
We don't have a copy of.
I know we don't have, I know.
Not with the plat, just this one?
Yeah, we don't have. Is there a way to bring, you know, we didn't get the plat?
Oh, that's the one, yeah.
If he could bring up the plat? And I guess I have a question. Looking at the plat, you have Highway 65 going down the backside of Lot 6 and 7. It's kind of creating the double frontage. Is there anything on the plat? I can't read any notes that no access from Highway 65 to those lots.
I'll address it when you, when you left.
Okay, that was.
Yeah.
That was my question.
Yeah, you're welcome to come to your.
Okay. Thank you. Jim Flood. Yeah, we, originally, we had, we were achieving frontage on from the highway. Then it was determined somewhere in the process that that wasn't proper. So we had that, I don't know if you remember that frontage discussion? We had the reduction. So the frontage is actually achieved by the internal road. And the reason we did the remainder is to declare non-buildability. Usually whenever we use the word lot, like if we were to declare the area outside the four lots as a lot, it would imply a building permit possibility. So the remainder is, clearly declares that it's non-buildable.
Our code doesn't allow remainder parcels.
Okay.
Yeah, just call it future phase?
Happy to, yeah. No problem at all.
Technicality.
Technicality, but.
Technicality, but yeah.
Happy to do that.
And again, with the double frontage, you don't, can there be a note on there about no access?
Yeah, that's not a problem at all.
I remember that discussion, UDOT would never allow, it's too steep as well.
It's quite steep, but just to make sure.
Yep. So we'll just put a condition, just add a note, no access from 65 and future phase. Happy with both of those?
Yeah.
What else?
Just the CCNRs be recorded.
Yeah, so we got four extra ones. CCNR is the insurance just for these lots. And then the two that we just talked about, access and get rid of the remaining parcel. Yep. Is that it?
Didn't you mention something about temporary turnarounds during each phase?
Yeah, they, they're actually, they're actually part of the improvement plans.
Oh.
We actually have two or three of them in or out. They're very visible in the improvement plans. We worked it out with the fire department.
Oh, yeah, I can see that.
There you go.
Anything else? No? Okay. All right. If we got everything, we'll ready for a motion once someone's ready.
Mr. Chair. Okay. I'm just looking at the motion, and it says approve, but it should be recommend approval to the county commission?
Is this final?
This is for final, but it's. Mr. Chair, I move we forward a positive recommendation to the county commission for Golden Hills Phase 1 Final Plat, application number 21.046, allowing for a four-lot subdivision of land located in sections 1, 2, 3, and 11 of Township 2 North, Range 3 East, off of Highway 65 and East Canyon, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated July 14, 2022, and with the following additional conditions. Remember that the remainder parcel be renamed to future phase, that a note be added to the plat for no access from Highway 65, that CCNRs are recorded prior to recordation of final plat, and that improvement insurance is only required for Phase 1.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion with a ton of conditions in a second. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes? Thanks for that. All right. On to item number eight.
Good evening. I'm Jake Young. So I've been contracted with the county to assist with planning. So I'm going to go over the Nine Line CUP application. And I'd like to actually go through the maps first so I could explain a little bit about the project, and then I'll give you our recommendations on that. The property's located in the CB zone, commercial buffer zone, and then also the airport overlay zone, the AOZ. And you'll see it on your screen. Sorry. Oh. I was going to leave some.
Bailey, can you put a light?
Okay. So you know where it is. But there's the map right there. And the new post-hangers are being built to the northeast of the existing ones and outside of the, of the airport master plan, Phase 1. Photo of the site. Here is an exhibit provided by the engineer, a site plan showing the two buildings proposed, the one on the left and then also the hangar on the right, and then helicopter pads as well. And the engineering plans have been reviewed by Gardner Engineering, a second engineering firm, to provide a third-party review. And they provided red lines to the applicant and his engineers. And then just this week, we received updated engineering plans, and we're reviewing them to see if there's compliance. Here's a basic plan with some landscape recommendations. We are recommending a full landscape plan with additional details of plants and so additional landscape, this is a recommendation. But you'll see, this is also a good plan to see the two hangers and then the helicopter pads as well. Application. This is, the memo is included in your packet from the reviewing engineer, Gardner Engineering. Map just showing it is outside of the flood plain, flood map. It's also located outside of the wildland urban interface, the Willie. It's an exemption zone, so properties are not within the Willie for wildland fire concerns. It's closed, but not inside it. It's closed, but not inside it. The county code does go over the RPZ runway protection zone. Did some research on that because I'm not a pilot, not familiar with that. And according to the FAA, it starts at the end of the runway going out. And where this is located adjacent to the runway, these buildings are not within their runway protection zone. But the county code does cover that, so I thought that'd be important.
I have a question about that. Can I answer that now?
Yes.
So...
And we may need to ask the applicant or other aviation experts, but go ahead.
So I'm confused on why the runway extension is in the packet because I was under the understanding that the commission, is that what they're called?
County Commission. Yeah, County Commission.
The county commission is the one that actually has to do that. So are they extending the runway?
No, I was just showing this because the county code talks about the runway in the airport overlay zone, the runway protection zone. And this property, this location is not in that. And so this was just research to show you that it's not in that area.
Even with the potential...
But it says runway extended.
So the confusion is the...
No, there is no proposal to extend the runway, correct?
Yeah, these were not part of the research.
Yes, this is just part of the research because the county code talks about this and this is research to show that is what it is and that it's not part of this project. Just because it's in the code, in the airport overlay zone, I want to make sure that we were hitting all the items in it. And the next item goes along with that. In the county code is a requirement for an FAA 77 letter. This is the letter that's been provided by the FAA that they approve the project. I even called the FAA and talked to the letter writer from the FAA and it is the 77 letter as required by the county code. That's it. Okay. So I'm going to go back now to conditions.
It's always helpful, especially when there's a lot of public out, it's mandatory for us to kind of walk people through what a conditional use permit is and what conditions are. So one example would be, you know, we can't just apply conditions that aren't part of our table. You know, we can mitigate. Can you just walk us through that? What is, what is the conditional use permit? What does that mean? And what conditions can we apply and why are we not?
So a conditional use permit has some similarities from a permitted use in that if all the conditions are met, then by state law, you look at it and say, okay, if the negative impacts of this use can be mitigated, that's the term commonly used with conditional use permit, and then the conditional use permit is granted. And so the role of the county is to look at the application, look at the conditions of the proposed uses, the buildings, the site, and then what negative conditions can be mitigated, whether it be noise or visual or access, public safety, and then those conditions are applied. And like you said, Chair, is that the commissions do have to be on target with the use. They just can't be, they have to be relevant to the application.
Appreciate that.
And then also, they have to be in line with county ordinances. And so after discussion with staff members going through this, we actually spent at least one or two months on it, working this through. Staff does make a recommendation for conditional use permit. But there are a number of conditions that we're recommending that's listed in your packet on page one of the application. So it's page 22 of the packet, and I'm going to go through those. And this does affect the comments that were mentioned today. I just want to bring that up, that I feel like the conditions that we're requesting are in line with the comments.
I have another question before we start that.
Yes.
I guess I'm confused at what this is going to be. Is it just two hangars? Is it a business that's being run out of these buildings?
I'm hoping that when the applicant proposes...
Can we have that before we go?
Yeah, I can pause mine and we can have the applicant come up. Let's do that.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah, so just left and right. So right, right advances. I just figure out the later, so.
Thanks for the time. I'm Buster Delmoni. I'm the president and owner, co-owner with my wife, Parra, of Nine Line LOC. And we've never done anything like this. We're an aviation company. We're not a developer. So we're learning as we go and we're getting good guidance along the way. So as goalposts get put in front of us, we're going to do our best to take the ball through. So this is, who are we? It's up there. We're, we've been in business for seven and a half years now. We're right here in Mountain Green. We're hometown aerial firefighters. We have prime contracts with the US Forest Service, providing uniquely qualified aerial firefighting pilots to fly permanent aircraft. That's me and the small airplane up front guiding. And what we hope to do now, our business has grown to a point where we have the ability to invest in our local community. This, probably this development is not necessarily the best strategic thing from an aviation standpoint because Morgan County is an airstrip, not really an airport, doesn't have air traffic control, doesn't have security, doesn't have fueling, doesn't have lights, doesn't have instrument approaches. But we love being here and so we want to invest in our community and we think we're a good fit. That note on the bottom is important to pick up on, is although we fly firefighting aircraft for the government, the government will not authorize us to bring those into Morgan County. So we're not going to be operating out of Morgan County. So I'll tell you what we are going to be doing here. Where am I pointing this thing at? Can you hit the next one?
The button on the right.
This one, right? That's what I see. So here's the overview. Two components. Phase A in blue is our own company personal hangar, an asset we'd like to build here in the blue. And then Phase B is the US Forest Service Permanent Helicopter Base. We hope to make it. We are in discussions with them. We're, everything seems to be pointing in this direction and we hope to give them a new home. The timing on that is we hope to start on Phase A, the blue, this year, and then about next fall, we hope to start on Phase B, the green. And you can see the, all three helicopter pads right there. Okay, so this is looking from basically where the cotton would start up Willow Creek Road, looking back down to the southwest at Wasatch Peaks Ranch with 84 cutting through Weaver Canyon. All of the existing hangars right now are just flattened by Google Earth, but that's the aviation center that we hope to build. So what are we going to do? The Nine Line Hangar is a 9,600 square foot hangar to house two aircraft. The aircraft on the left, the smaller one, is currently owned by us, by Nine Line, and that aircraft was purchased off a local pilot here in Mountain Green, and that aircraft has been based at Mountain Green for over 25 years. So we're not, that aircraft is not a new add to Mountain Green. The one on the right is an eight to 10-seat aircraft. It's about the biggest aircraft you can physically, legally get in and out of the airport based on runway weight permits and the length of the runway and the performance required. So it's about an eight to 10-seater is what you can configure that airplane for, and that's what we want to do with our hangar, is store those two airplanes and then look at the potential for Wasatch Peaks Ranch or what not to run a, potentially a private charter. Just recognize if we are going to run a private charter, we'll probably end up doing 60% to 70% of it out of Ogden. Because if the charter request for us to fly somebody from A to B is going to either take off or land at night or in bad weather, we have to pre-stage the airplane over to Ogden to legally be able to conduct that operation. And so what we would guess is that airplane on the right, best case, would take off and/or land at Morgan County four times a week or less. So that's the added traffic burden.
With the existing runway.
With the existing runway, no changes. We're not asking to do anything with the runway. Correct. So that's our intent, is to just own our own hangar and have two assets and keep them close to home. The headquarters for Nine Line is on Willow Creek Road out of our home in the cottonlands. That's what the Nine Line Hangar is hopefully going to look like pending all approvals.
So just curious, not all of this is relevant to the CUP application, but so you're a sub for the Forest Service, you're guiding?
We're a prime contractor. They do not have enough pilots, huge pilot shortage in the country. If you've flown commercially, you've heard it. And so we have literally unicorns in our company that they can't find elsewhere. The qualification to do what we do in controlled traffic over fire, there's 14 of us in the whole nation.
So what happens to the Forest Service in the interim, between the phases?
So I've got a good, if I've got a good slide, hopefully you will...
Okay. Getting ahead of myself, sorry.
So the Forest Service, here's the three elements of Phase B. They have initially, in our discussion, said they need 54-car parking lot. Done. They need a building to house the number of people based on federal government requirements of square footage per employee. 7,600 square feet is what they need. That's what's displayed. And then they need helicopter pads with certain safety circles and distances from them. We're trying to meet that need. So three helipads, the hangar and the parking lot. This is where they currently are right now. They're in that building to the right that's cut off in half. They've been at Morgan Airport for over two decades, I've been told. And the reason, one of the questions was, the reason that they're leaving is the building is no longer GSA compliant, General Services Administration of the Federal Government. It's not ADA compliant, so wheelchair-bound firefighters can't operate and the drinking fountains aren't low enough for them. And then the energy component, the lead energy component of the building does not meet federal government standards. So they need a new home and we hope to be that solution. What's going to happen with that building? We're in discussions. This is not something we started, we've just learned, but there is, I don't know if he's an applicant, Sean, if you know or not, but there is a gentleman working with the county right now who wants to use that building, buy that building from the county to set up what's an airport's called a fixed base operator.
They can have an FBO here. Interesting.
An FBO. And what his primary purpose, as I'm told, I definitely don't want to speak directly for him, but as I understand it, fuel sales, he's going to create, there is no fuel right now for sale at Morgan County Airport. So he would like to bring that in, not Nine Line. We don't intend to bring that in. So we're complementing each other. And he wants to start an avionics maintenance shop and potentially an airport restaurant. But these are things that I've heard, I don't know how up to date that is, but that's my understanding. So grain of salt. Take that with a grain of salt. So that's what would happen with the building, but the Forest Service must vacate it because they know they're on federal government waivers to even be there. And then there's their current workforce. So when you're looking at that, you know, that's seasonal, okay? So they're pretty much there from May until October. And then for all of us that drive Willow Creek Road know that they kind of just seal it all up and store some fleet vehicles there. And they often, it doesn't mean right now they have three helicopters there, but that's kind of rare. When I saw that, I got to take a picture. As an aerial firefighter, it's rare that I see all the assets at home, all the marbles right here at home. They often deploy because all aerial assets are considered national assets and so are often going to other places that have more critical need. So just because there's 47 employees there from May to October, it's very rare that they're all there at once. So when we're talking impacts with my neighbors and whatnot. Okay. That's what we are proposing to them. They will get a final say on size and dimensions, so we'll have to revisit that. But that meets the requirements as they've outlined them to me. We would ask the Forest, if they want to change the shape somewhat and keep it all compliant with all the other ordinances, that will be fine with us, but we are going to ask them that we've got to keep the facade matching the Nine Line building so that they, it looks synchronized. Because I drive that road, my family drives that road, we too want to take pride in this and value. Okay, what have we done so far? We've presented to the Airport Advisory Board and we've achieved a unanimous vote in favor of what we're trying to do. We've gone and talked to, and are learning on the fly, the will serve, we've hit all the four major ones. We don't have final will serve letters yet because we don't even have the land leased to us yet. So we don't even have the right to submit some of these will serve applications. But we at least are learning how to do it. On the subject of water, to answer that question of our neighbor, it's not our call. We understand too, we have talked to Mike Johansson, we understand that there's half of an ERC remaining. And whether it goes to Nine Line or it goes to landscape burn, that's got to be somebody else's decision, but we're aware of it, okay? So, but it's outside my lane to talk about how that's going to be addressed. Almost done. So to address the staff recommendations. So the lighting plan, all I can say is we've read it. I don't know when we get approval on that, maybe at the building permit stage, but we will comply. There's not going to be much lighting. The airport doesn't operate at night. It is a day, good weather only airport. So there will be no nighttime operations out of Nine Line. The access easement with adjacent lot owner, I did not understand that. It's the airport's land and it's a public use airport. And so anybody can walk on it, drive into it. I don't understand what the easement comment from staff was, but I'm happy to chase them.
Yeah, we could follow the map. Maybe when we get to it after.
Okay. We'll comply with...
I'll go through this part.
We'll comply with, obviously, the water issues as decided and assisted by the county, the landscaping plan, we've also looked at that, and a preliminary has been submitted. The trash enclosure wall, that really won't come into play until the Phase B in the Forest Service because they're the ones that are going to generate the most trash. We're just keeping two airplanes stored there. So we don't have a need for a dumpster or anything. It's when the Forest Service comes in. And we will definitely comply with whatever the requirements are, being a wall being six feet or less. We did update the CE plans per the Gardner Engineer Review and, let's see, complete Phase Two of the Airport Master Plan. Unsure of what our role is in that. Wasatch Civil Engineer has annotated that. I've got a slide here on that. And lastly, the FAA Part 77 Plan, the FAA had no objections, that's been discussed.
I have a question on the landscaping. You planned the full width, landscape...
So there's a, ma'am, there's a couple of things going on with that. It's an airport, so none of the other hangars have any landscape requirements. Due to the fact that we're going to invest some extra money to make it look nice, we're also going to put landscape, you know, in and around the buildings by the fence line. But you've got helicopters and you've got airplanes. It's not like we can put trees and bushes between helipads. You're going to have fuel trucks driving to the helicopters as they currently do for the Forest Service operation. You're going to have big tarmac. So the preliminary landscape plan that's in the package, that's about the extent that you could even do on an airport without creating hazards to the aircraft.
I just wondered if that continuation of the landscape buffer would go on down?
Nobody has, nobody has, that was, that was somebody else's 20 years ago development and I don't know how that plays into it. And nobody has levied that requirement on us, so we have not budgeted.
We'll ask staff after this and we'll take a look at the whole thing. We want to get the public's questions answered at some point, but...
So the impact to Jason...
Sorry, real quick, somebody had water on the other one. What about Seward as well? Have you contacted Mountain Green Seward?
Yep, I've talked to Bill Coots and Seward and he said, he told me exactly the steps I need to take after the land is leased.
Okay. Do they have, I know it's a... Do they have, I know it's a condition of approval and we'll get to it in a second, but do they have, I know, well, I know they do have ERUs, but do they have available connections for Sewer for that?
Yep. He indicated that, he just told me, here's what you got to do, but it sounded doable. So to address another staff response about adjacent properties needing to be mitigated. So the building designs, we just showed them. That's number one and we think that we are, you know, keeping the high standard that's there of uniformity, but maybe even raising the bar. That's our biased opinion. On the subject of noise, so this was the layman's look, the common sense look, I can't speak for everybody else, but this just seemed to be what I thought was obvious. The red rectangles there, currently the helicopters operate in the vicinity of those houses. When helicopters take off and land, they tend to be slow on approach and departure and so that's where the noise propagation is the worst. Once they're in translational lift and they're moving, they, you know, it just goes away quickly. So the houses that are impacted are in the lower red and we're hoping to move them up next to open space where nothing will be built, next to a hillside and there are no houses. So I would think that's a good thing to move the helicopters further away from the cluster of housings. That's the noise issue. On the fixed wing side, like I said, our Cessna currently is there and operates and then we're going to add one more airplane and the airplane we showed you is not the kind of airplane like the other ones at the airport that beats up the pattern and does multiple approaches. It's expensive to operate. When it takes off, it leaves. When it comes back, it lands. It doesn't loiter in the traffic pattern. So that's our comment on the noise. The traffic count, like I said, worst case four takeoffs and departures a week and most of the time it may be out of Ogden. And then other miscellaneous nuances, I'm not really sure, but just to give a visual, what we're doing is we're asking to move the Forest Service in the yellow line, the yellow area, from one area to 500 yards up the road. So traffic, I guess that would be a negative for the people who don't get the employees going by their house on Willow Creek Road. That would be a negative, that you'd have that additional traffic shifting up 500 yards up Willow Creek Road. And that is really it. I wanted to, because somebody had mentioned it, this was the other option that Sean Beckstrom raised, was what if nine line doesn't go in there in the remaining land? And you continue the current rhythm of 60 by 60 hangars? Well, that's what we think you could get. You could get five more 60 by 60 hangars in lieu of the nine line, but you're going to lose the Forest Service option and you're going to have as many as 20 more aircraft based on the field and the associated traffic. And then lastly, on the subject of Phase One and Phase Two, since that was a staff comment, we asked WASAT Civil Engineer, can we have the master plan and what is Phase One and Phase Two? And this is what we were given with the red box in the middle demarcating between Phase One and Phase Two. And so we are in Phase Two, which ties to the ordinance. And the ordinance on construction standards, since we are deviating from the white norm, are silent, the ordinance is silent on Phase Two. All it says is construction standards, all applicable ordinances, NFA regulations and the approved airport master plan, which I understand this is it from WASAT Civil. In addition, hangars and any other buildings in Phase One of the airport plan that may be erected upon the airport shall conform to the following standards. And they list heights and walls and peaks and colors. But there's nothing listed for Phase Two. So when I spoke with Attorney Smith, he said, if there's nothing for Phase Two, then we recommend that you just maybe make an attachment, part of your, an exhibit, part of your lease so that you're bound to it by lease. And I think there's one more slide. So this was the Exhibit B that we submitted to the county attorney to be attached to the lease. And in that exhibit, next slide, is a new set of standards that would match what was presented with the elevations, colors, stone wings coating, timber, heights, walls.
Okay. So you're proposing the same design standard as Phase One?
No, sir. I'm proposing to raise the bar and for Phase Two, these are the design standards.
Oh, I see.
And the attorney is saying just make it part of your lease.
Okay.
Again, goalposts get put up by the experts and I'm going to try to kick the ball through.
And just at that point of clarification, the CUP is for the land, not the person, because you haven't even leased it yet.
Correct. Yeah, if we run with that.
Men's land, yeah.
Why did we put the design standard just at Phase One? Can you remind me? Was there a reason?
I thought we knew that. Forest Service may be looking at this property.
So we didn't want, was it that we did want to restrict it under, it was very lengthy discussion.
How tall?
The nine line hangar, to get that bigger airplane in, is 31 feet. Phase One has a 27 foot.
Right.
So this would be four feet.
Yeah, we were more concerned, really, from what I remember with the size of the sides and what they were doing.
Yeah.
They were building, you know, six-foot foundations and putting the hangars on top of them, increasing the height. So the biggest concern for us was overall, the definition of overall versus from the foundation. Yeah, we wanted to go from ground up and I think that's what that's showing, right? From ground up or not?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because there are some that got kind of tall by getting around that. Trying to think what else. Those design standards would still fit into, you have to deal with the FAA in that anyway, but I mean, they still fit into the airport overlay and the.
Right. They call it navigable airspace and what we're talking is what they call a transitional surface.
Correct.
Which is off the sides, runway protection zones off the end.
Right. Are there height restrictions for runway protection off the end?
They're different, the rise over run is different depending on what surface that you're talking for navigable airspace and the FAA doesn't approve construction, they just object or don't object.
Correct.
So our letter was a letter of no objection.
Right. No, I appreciate that, this is for our discussion, but I'm trying to remember why and I think that's why is because we were further away from, in Phase Two, we were further away, we were.
From the runway.
Yeah, further away from the runway.
Yes.
So the slope increases.
Yeah. When those hangars were getting closed, they were getting put, yeah.
I just needed to get that right in my mind to figure why we didn't transition those same standards to Phase Two, but that's why I think.
Sorry for the time, but I'm hoping I hit on all the questions. I'm trying to think, water rights, replacing the Forest Service fueling, the fueling, we have to go to Ogden right now.
What was the deal with number two, the easement?
Big cross.
We can go back to staff on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. We just need, I just need to see, I need to see the conditions, just to get it straight. I think I've got them on the table here, but I'd like to just walk through them in my mind.
Yeah, okay.
If you could address that first one, the member of the public had a question.
Okay, so on the lighting, even if it's minimal lighting, we still need a lighting plan. You know, maybe it's just lights at the building entrances and not area lighting, but that'll be required for a building permit.
And that's in accordance with our existing.
So there'll be no light trespass?
Yeah, yes, and then we can verify it conforms with ordinances. On the cross access easement, we are good there. That was in there from a previous report and look at this and so that's not applicable because it is all owned by the county.
So we can remove that?
Yes, that can be removed. And then number three, will serve letter from the water provider and also the will serve letters from all the other utility agencies. You could even request that the Airport Master Plan address water availability and water rights for the entire Phase Two, maybe that provides it, or at least the plan. Landscaping plan is in there conceptually and the final plan would have the species. And I think the focus there is on the frillage and the beautification and of course it needs to be airport safety in terms of nothing tall. Number five, I think that's just a typical on the trash, I'm going to ask Bailey on that. Yeah, I think that's just typical and that would be addressed at the building permit level. Number six is in process, updated plans were provided this week and so staff will review those. Again, those would be necessary for building permit. And then the reason for the Phase Two is, is just like was mentioned, the county code references Phase One, but we don't have a Phase Two and so to make that compliant.
That should not be on the shoulders of the applicant. The county should finish the document, they want to finish the document. But because he submitted an application.
Right.
But we can't do that. He submitted an application before it's completed, which means that he's held and bound by the laws that are adopted currently. So while I would agree that the second phase of the master plan should be completed, you can't hold me to that.
So you're suggesting removing that one?
It needs to be removed.
For clarification, when they got the FAA letter back, that was with the heights, the proposed heights and sizes as is?
Is there consent of that plan?
Okay.
And the application to that?
And that, the letter came in December of last year.
Can I have a question about the water? I believe it is the hangar owner that needs to get the water, not the county. I may be mistaken, but I, maybe we can talk with a member of the.
The advisory council. Yeah, what would, actually I'd like clarification on the question about water.
Yeah, I thought.
If you wouldn't mind, yeah. So what was your name?
Michelle.
Michelle, sorry, Michelle. So what was the concern about water?
The concern about water is right now, there isn't, they don't, the county doesn't own water for the nine line development right now. So if they were going to develop right now, there's just a half ERC left.
So the airport's already kind of.
The airport's maxed out. And their, Mike's wording was, we became very creative in getting enough water for the hangars that have been approved. So they kind of pushed it to the limit. He said in the past, we would have never approved that many hangars with that amount of water, but they did. And now just with having a half left, with the agreement where they have already agreed to do the landscape buffer, the question is, okay, I think Mike said it's like a $20,000 fee to get another usage, which would take care of nine line, but the question is, okay, is the county responsible for that or is the developer responsible for that? And I don't know if that question has been answered.
I have the answer. I'm on the water board with Mike Johansson.
Would you mind coming up just so that you can get near the mic? Thanks.
So I am also on the water board for the Cottonwood Mutual Water Company. So typically we do throw that on the developer to bring the water to the development, so.
For the infrastructure, right?
Yeah. So if Buster, you know, if that's the response back, then Buster comes to us and requests water, AKA Mike Johansson with water board, then we would just say, well, you need to be able to go get water and come back to us and we'll serve you the water, but, you know, go get it because there's not enough in our system. So, you know, if that's the direction the water company goes, then we might say Buster, go get water and he can go buy more from Weaver Basin, he can go get from some gardeners, he can go get, he can go get his own water if there's not enough.
Okay.
Yeah. So the half that was left, when they looked at it and they tried to decide, okay, is that half enough left to do nine lines, two buildings? And they said it would possibly be enough to do one of them, which I think is why maybe they're trying to get the one passed, I'm not sure. But then there is none for what has already been agreed on finishing. So the airport board is actually not meeting again until September and so those questions have not been answered and we haven't discussed them.
I think we got it covered with a condition that they have to get a will serve, I mean, they haven't even leased.
I don't know if I want to leave that the county may need to assist.
What does it actually say?
Says the county may need to assist with this requirement.
I don't know why the county, why the developer wouldn't be the responsible.
Right, I'd like to maybe remove that line.
For a CUP, it's, we shouldn't be getting into.
The taxpayers.
Or is it the county and the landowner?
Yeah, but they're not the developer. Developer brings water.
Yeah, because they'd have to, however they do it, doesn't matter, as long as they figure out the water, because it's not the county's burden to do that.
Sorry, one more thing on that water, I also own a hangar there too. And so the county has been responsible to bring the water to the hangars? That has been their job and with the new.
Infrastructure.
Correct, correct. Sorry.
Then water, yeah.
Correct. So they brought the infrastructure to it and then, but even in my current hangar, I developed my own hangar and I didn't go get the will serve, I didn't go get the water, right? It was available. So in the past, the county has actually gotten the water, worked with Mike Johansson because they do own the land, but, so it would be a little bit different to say in any future hangars, I'm also building a hangar in one of the new ones going in right now. So I, again, I didn't go get water. The county's providing that water, so. But from the water side, we do tell the developers to go get it, but we didn't, we didn't talk to any of the developers on the 10 new, eight new hangars right now going in. We just provided that for them, so, like Michelle was saying. So yeah, it is a little bit switched, I think, for the county now and potentially request it from the developer, but outside of the airport board, the water, outside of the airport, the water company does tell the developer to bring, go get your water. So that's what I'm saying, you could say that to Buster or any future developer, if you're worried about it, go get your own water. That's what we would tell them from the water board. But in past, for all the other hangars, it's been provided. So hopes that helps, I don't.
We have a commercial development, yeah.
I just can't see all the conditions. I tend to agree with Debbie because just in the wording of it, all we're doing is mentioning our recommendation, let the county figure out how they're going to.
Right. Just the will serve letter, the county could be involved, but I'd rather not have it as part of the condition, but the county may be involved.
Yeah, I don't think we need to get that specific.
Yeah, just a will serve letter.
Yeah, I was looking at the table and the table makes, the table itself is simpler. Conditions, it just says, yeah, rather than the listing of conditions.
The actual.
I'm just, just for my own benefit, it has nothing to do with the application, but the public asked about the pre-existing agreement with landscaping. Can somebody show me on a map where that is? Do you know where it is or can, I don't have any history or anything, I was just.
Where the buffer is.
Yeah, where that buffer is and I'm just curious what.
If you can bring up the map that had the yellow triangle on it, I can show you exactly.
Okay.
It's in front of the homes of Willow Creek.
That one right there would work too. So where the road bends right around the airport there, we see the white hangars right there.
Yeah.
So that's the barrier all the way around there that they were supposed to put in. So that's where the buffer area is.
Who, the original development?
They put like a three-foot dirt wall and a couple trees that died.
I have the agreement, if you want to see that, but it was between the county and the developer and it was the county that was responsible for it.
Okay.
And they owned that, the commission, the members that are serving right now have owned that and said, yeah, we do need to finish that and are in the process of doing that. And the airport board, we discussed, okay, if the county is taking it to that point, and I know Bobby had asked, Bobby who serves on the council is also the airport representative from the council, he had said, it would be a good idea when you bring this in front of the commission that you do extend that vegetation buffer. And with that, the gentleman that's planning it, the portion that the county is responsible for, he's very familiar with the vegetation that needs to be used around airports because he's done vegetation around airports and he's part of the science and density of that. And so to continue that to what Buster's doing.
Gotcha. I would recommend bringing that to the county commission. I mean, we have an interesting role here, we're setting the goalposts, so to speak, we're just making the checks and balances for the administration boards of this and then the county council can look at the specifics of that. But I think you need to bring that to them. You know, looking at just this condition of use permit, we're just looking at conditions based off this application. based off this application.
I would also point out that that buffer looks like it's part of Phase One and the airport master plan with Phase Two doesn't include those same requirements and conditions. So they're not something that we can hold.
We'll leave it to the county commission.
Yeah, leave it to the commission. Okay. So, any other questions for the applicant or staff? No, anything down here? Good discussion.
Well, I do have, and this is, maybe it's more legal, our ordinance requires that commercial aeronautic activity needs approval by the county commission. So does approval of the cap, the CUP grant them approval of that commercial?
So in my discussion with the county attorney and the applicant, the reason he didn't go straight to the county commission for approval is because it's a land use condition use permit, which requires a recommendation from the county commission. So that's why they're in front of you right now.
Right. But I'm just saying, when they go to the county commission, their approval will be, meets the approval of this commercial activity.
That's correct.
This specific one.
Cool.
Good. All right, we got a lot going on here.
So we're taking Condition Two and Seven off, the second half of Three?
Yeah, the second sentence of Three, yeah.
Is that it?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I move to forward a positive recommendation to the county commission for the nine-line conditional use permit application 22.003, located at 3806 West Willow Creek Road in the Morgan County Airport, based on the findings with the conditions listed in the staff report related to July 14th and as modified by the conditions in the findings below. To delete Condition Number Two, get rid of the second sentence of Condition Number Three, and to get rid of Condition Number Seven.
Okay. Get that? Okay. Do we have a second on that motion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for that lengthy discussion. Appreciate it.
A question of privilege, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Did I step out for a...
Yes, granted. Are we taking a break? Yeah, we might as well.
And now it's a five-minute break.
Yeah, so we're gonna take a five-minute break. We'll be back here just before 10 minutes after the hour.
Where they have a landslide, is that where you get that?
Yeah, so we're gonna take a five-minute break. We'll be back here just before 10 minutes after the hour.
I almost forgot you lived at, I've never seen you in any meetings. I'm sorry, I'm retiring. We just saw each other in the course. How are you hungry? We're gonna go to...
Where they have a landslide, is that where you get that?
No, that's the island.
Oh.
Very versatile.
So that's a pretty one with the front of the mailbox and that. Where they have a landslide, is that where you get that?
No, that's the island.
Oh. Yes. Better answer it.
I can't.
Boy, am I glad I retired. I remember the guy. I'm gonna tell you that.
It's an interesting one. I love it.
Yeah. I thought that was a good one. Wow. Did they really love him pretty much? Have they made...
What?
Better answer it.
I can't.
Boy, am I glad I retired. I remember the guy. I'm gonna tell you that.
It's an interesting one. I love it. I love it.
Yeah. I thought that was a good one. Wow. Did they really love him pretty much? Have they made...
What?
Better answer it.
I can't.
Boy, am I glad I retired. I remember the guy. I'm gonna tell you that.
It's an interesting one. I love it. I love it.
Yeah. I thought that was a good one. Wow. Did they really love him pretty much? Have they made... Wow, jazz. I used to work right here. Oh, this is, oh. Yeah. You probably live in Maryland. Probably not this year.
I love it. I'm more with the... So, actually, Steve, you're not... Gary and Chris are next year. So you've got to please me for it.
No. None whatsoever. I like, I'm starting to be about to... I'd rather...
Just take that line. Just take that line, read it. Okay, folks, we're gonna get started again. There's an email from Gina Grandprie. The Como Springs. I need to read it.
Now we're short field.
Yeah, it's kind of late. Yeah. She's watching. She's in comment. Ask Josh. Okay, so we're on item number nine, right?
Yeah, the CUP.
It's the CUP motion. And the room is whittled down.
Okay. So, this request is for Phase Two of short field landings, located at 4070 West, 5800 North, Mountain, Utah. It's a conditional use permit in the CB zone of commercial buffer. The property can be accessed from Cottonwood Commercial Street. The applicant is proposing to construct 14 units of simple corral structures that are 1350 to 1700 square feet with a business office front. And I guess the concept is mirroring Phase One. The units are to be used as storage or small businesses. The applicant wants to be able to either lease or sell the units individually eventually and will apply for a commercial subdivision in the future. There will be one combined HOA with Phase One due to having comic streets, garbage and landscaping. The applicant is requesting a CUP to begin horizontal infrastructure. Staff is requiring site plan reviews for this phase and Phase One to come to my attention, to our attention that that didn't happen. And both, so Phase One is on 4032 West, 5800 North, and this one is on 4070 West. So yeah, and if the applicant wants to say anything, wants to add anything?
I apologize. I would like to, if you guys want to hear from me.
Yeah, we do.
Oh, it's short and sweet, man.
Please.
Buster's great, but that was very important. So. Good to see you guys. I'm Blair Gardner, I'm the owner of the property. So real quick to clarify, we are now in Phase One, all the way through the building permit application, we're actually in the foundations and so forth. So the site plan request and requirement that is, and Josh, you might want to speak to that, but I think we've resolved that internally, correct?
Phase One was done, so Phase Two will go through site plan.
Correct. So real quick, Phase One, I don't know if you have even just a plan you can show, but I acquired Phase One and began the process for the 14 units, which is the basically separation on the right side. There's a dark black line in the middle, okay? That's actually the property line between the two properties, okay? So I then acquired Phase Two, is what we're calling that in this conditional use application, but essentially with the conditional use and approval, I'm just mirroring the exact same product. It's gonna be a little bit bigger and size variations, but all 28 of those total units will be held under one HOA, one umbrella, all the garbage, sewer, snow removal, everything is gonna be done in, as unison, as one total project. So, on item 10, which we'll get to in a second, is where actually I come in for a subdivision, which means that I will remove that black line, it will become one specific property and one, what am I trying to say?
It'll be a condominium plot.
Correct, condominium plot. So it'll be one subdivision and not two separate ones. And then the condominium plot will allow each individual unit to have its own tax ID number, which will allow me to either sell that and or lease them individually.
And for further clarification, he's not having two conditional use permits, we're rolling this conditional use permit approval into the previous one you had before, so there's only one that will have to...
So it's an amended, the original conditional use is now being amended to add this second, today the second phase as a one conditional use. Thanks, Josh, I appreciate it. By the way, he's been awesome. Good hire.
Yeah, we can see that already.
So then why isn't it an amendment? Why isn't it listed as an amendment?
Because we'd already submitted. So we, based upon previous instruction prior to Josh, it was recommended that we come in with a second conditional use permit, which made basically twice the work. Josh, with his wisdom, said, let's just amend the original conditional use into one.
I don't know if it's my wisdom, it's just, I don't like to...
Well, so if it's already been to the county commission...
I don't know. So the first conditional use permit, which gave him approval for first phase, already went through the process. So this is a second conditional use permit. So in your stipulations or in your recommendation, just note that this is to amend the existing conditional use permit as part of Phase One and add Phase Two.
So shouldn't that be in part of the motion?
Yes.
Positive recommendation to amend.
No, and we're gonna approve the conditional use permit. That, the motion's wrong. We don't, this does not go, the concept approval goes through the commission. This is a C2. So we need this to approve the amended...
Approve this as an amendment to the original...
CUP?
CUP, with existing conditions and everything else.
Okay. Sorry.
Any questions you guys have specifically for me? You weren't happy to answer?
No, I...
It's simple?
Well, I don't think that, we're just, let us wrestle through this for just one second.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll step up whenever needed.
Thanks, I appreciate it. What's the next one, then?
That's the concept approval for the subdivision.
I was confused by the definition condominium...
It's just a subdiv, commercial subdivision.
Yeah, I appreciate that explanation.
That's why I remember it, is because they were talking about like they don't know what's gonna be in each building.
Right.
Yeah.
Words matter. I had implied, applied meaning to the word without understanding.
So, so it'll have the different application number than the original one?
We'll combine them.
Okay. Just try to figure out how to word it.
I would just word that it needs to be combined, that this is an amendment to the previous.
21.051?
21.051? Okay.
All right. Someone ready for a stab at that?
We're already not talking about it.
Are we not talking about it? I didn't hear anything else. So do you got any more questions for a stab at it for applicant?
I don't.
No? Do you?
No, I was just, I feel like I jumped the gun a little bit.
I feel like we're done.
Wraparound. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the CUP number 22.040, located at 4070 West, 5800 North, Mountain Green, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report for July 14th, 2022, and that we combine it with application number 21.051, which is, was approved previously.
Makes sense. Okay.
Yeah.
Second? I'll second that. Second over here. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So 10.
And this is when we will recommend approval.
Mm-hmm. So Part Two of the newly amended...
Okay, so this is the approval, or they're requesting approval of the commercial concept plan for the 14 units on acre one for Phase One and on 4030 West, 5800 North, and 14 units on the 1.34 acres for Phase Two on 4070 West, 5800 North. Okay, so both phases will be combined into one development, which will result into 28 flex space units. And yeah, as mentioned, there will be one HOA and, yeah, the goal is just to have each unit have its own tax ID eventually. And yeah, I'll just have, yeah, if we can...
Thank you very much. Motion?
Alex.
Any questions you guys have specifically for me? You weren't happy to answer?
No, I.
It's simple?
Well.
I don't think that, which let us wrestle through this for a second.
Absolutely. I'll step up whenever you need.
Thanks, I appreciate it. What's the next one, then?
That's the concept approval for the subdivision.
I was confused by the definition condominium.
It's just a subdiv, a commercial subdivision.
Yeah, I appreciate that explanation. I was confused.
That's why I remember it is because they were talking about like they don't know what's going to be in each building.
Right. Words matter. I had implied, applied meaning to the word without understanding.
So, so it'll have a different application number than the original one?
We'll combine them.
Okay, just try to figure out how to word it.
I would just word that it needs to be combined, that this is an amendment to the previous.
Um, it's twenty-one point oh five one. Twenty-one point oh five one? Okay.
All right. Someone ready for a stab at that?
We're already not talking about it.
Are we not talking about it? I didn't hear anything else. So do you got any more questions for a staff or applicant?
I don't.
No?
No.
Do you?
No, I was just, I feel like I jumped the gun a little bit.
I feel no, I felt like we're done.
Wraparound. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the CUP number twenty-two point zero four zero, located at forty seventy west, fifty-eight hundred north, Mountain Green, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report for July fourteenth, 2022, and that we combine it with application number twenty-one point zero five one, which is approved previously.
Makes sense. Okay.
Yeah.
Second?
I'll second that.
Second over here. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. So ten.
And this is when we will recommend approval.
Mm-hmm. So Part Two of the newly amended.
Okay, so this is the approval, or they're requesting approval of the commercial concept plan for the fourteen units on acre one for Phase One and on forty thirty west, fifty-eight hundred north, and fourteen units on the one point three four acres for Phase Two at forty seventy west, fifty-eight hundred north. Okay, so both phases will be combined into one development, which will result into twenty-eight flex space units. And yeah, as mentioned, there will be one HOA and yeah, the goal is just to have each unit have its own tax ID eventually. And yeah, I'll just have, yeah, if we can.
Thank you very much. Motion?
Um, Alex.
Alex, thank you. I'm married. So as I previously stated, Phase One was originally purchased. Phase Two came afterwards. Wasn't sure I was going to get it when we finally got it. We were already farther down the process from Phase One. So in the combination of combining both of these, we will have it in one HOA. Therefore, we have one entity that you have to deal with. As far as applicants, I'm going to respond to you, Mrs. Bass, in relation to who's going to be in these buildings as far as a subdivision, anytime you individualize ones, like for instance, if I owned them all and never subdivided them, then I would have full control. This is quote unquote the landlord of the project, right? But by individually condominiumizing each one of them, there will be an HOA that governs through our CCNRs that they do have to provide their building, or excuse me, their business application has to come through the county before they're approved to be able to be within that project. So essentially, it's a checks and balance for you and for me, as I will own a portion of these and I will lease out a portion is a possible concept. So if that helps you.
Yeah, well, the discussion was, we weren't, we're like, have we seen this before? But then that was a discussion that I remember is like everyone's going to have their own deal. They all have to go through their own process to get approved. So yeah, we're good.
I have a question regarding some comments at the beginning of the meeting regarding the setbacks. I understand that the lighting, we went through that with the, that first phase.
Correct.
And the landscaping, you're leaving the trees in the front.
Yes, ma'am.
And so the concern was just the setback. You're not.
Yeah, five B versus thirty.
Yeah.
But that would have to come up building permit, right?
Well, no, we're approving, this is, it'll be, the setbacks now will be identified at preliminary. But can you address that issue?
Yeah, absolutely. So currently with the, all the setbacks are within the compliance of the county and the code in terms of our allowances, given the Cottonwood Canyon Road as well as fifty-eight hundred. Now fifty-eight hundred is a private drive. It's not controlled by the county and the drive and access within these units will be private as well. So there's different conditions relative to that. And we've complied and supplied through the engineering all the required setbacks for us to be able to build. Therefore, we've already gone as far as receiving building permits on all three of the buildings that are in, again, I hate to say Phase One, Phase Two, but it's kind of still in that moment. As far as our Phase Two, we'll follow the same compliance and keep the same corridor and the linear flow of traffic to keep the buildings in the same line. But all of them will comply with the setbacks that are allowed by the county. There are building requirements relative to the type of construction, the type of firewalls with the fire department, given where the property lines are. By us eliminating the center property line between the two is actually a good thing, meaning there's not two different tax ID, two different buildings, two different properties. But we are in full compliance and will be in full compliance once we move out of the conditional or the conceptual phase and submit the fully engineered and site plans with our will serves for quote unquote Phase Two. Landscaping, you mentioned landscaping, didn't you? So we do have a landscape buffer that we're required to install along Cottonwood Canyon and all across the front of fifty-eight hundred. It was requested that we keep all existing vegetation with exception, I think, to one dead tree in the middle. But we are also going to be doing more of a zero scape and a drip system just so we can really do our part to keep the water down for us, for the community as well as cost. We have pre-purchased all of the ERUs or ERCs, I don't know what you guys call them, what they like to be called, for Phase One. Phase Two, we do have the will serve letter already in place for the water. Sewer company meets on Wednesday, every Wednesday, the first month, excuse me, the first Wednesday every month. We are on there, we have the application in and we're just waiting for their board to be able to approve. We have already installed their required grease trap system, which was above and beyond, relative to not knowing who the tenants will be in that unit. We are going to, it looks like we're going to be able to tie the Phase One and Phase Two together just so we don't have multiple quote unquote traps that they have to maintain. So everything's working very well so far. The subdivision application is simply, let's eliminate that center line, put it all as one and keep these as individual units.
And as I, to go back to the setbacks, just for a commercial buffer, it is a ten-foot setback for the side. So that will be along Cottonwood Canyon, correct? Is that your side?
Yeah, yeah, we have the setbacks and everything's done on Cottonwood Canyon. We have a ten-foot setback on the north boundary line. But if you notice, versus existing buildings on the Phase Two, there's a bigger buffer line.
Okay.
It's longer than I can point it out. You know what I'm talking about? Boy, I should.
Yeah.
This right here, see how this kind of gets thicker here? There is most likely we are going to adjust these buildings and step these back a little bit deeper, but we will stay with, well, with the ten-foot setback here. This line right here is the property line, but it's also being co-shared by this existing building. And so as far as we're going to, as you can see, we're going to keep this, our half of that easement or our half of that access is going to be intact. Most likely, we'll just improve that anyway because it does need, it's in need of repair as well as the curving veteran sidewalk here. And then all the landscaping requirement here will follow as well. Again, we'll be doing some adjustments as we move along, but that's the idea of the subdivision. But yes, we will be in full compliance of all aspects.
Okay, any other questions on this, on number ten?
I don't know.
I don't. Good.
Okay. Take steps, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, nothing for the applicant or staff? If someone's ready to make a motion on this?
This is a positive recommendation?
No, yeah, this will be a positive recommendation. This has to go to the county commission.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend a positive recommendation for short field landings, concept plan application number twenty-two point zero four one, allowing for a twenty-eight unit commercial subdivision of land located approximately forty thirty-two west, fifty-eight hundred north, based on the findings with the conditions listed in the staff report dated July fourteenth, 2022.
Okay. Motion? Second. In a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, on to item number eleven.
So the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for the, sorry, the expansion of an existing commercial campground. The property is located along the Weber River, opposite of Morgan County Fairgrounds, and the project area is thirty point fourteen acres in the eight-twenty zone. The applicant is proposing to increase from forty to seventy-two RV sites, put in a village of twenty-four cabins with walking path outside of the floodplain, new restaurant, clubhouse, bathroom, shower facility, pavilion, playground, fridges, and four fishing piers. The site can be accessed from five hundred east and a hundred south. So the resort is partly within a geologic hazard study, but that was all explained in the geologic report. There is a stipulation from the city, and I can have her order.
All right, I'm Theresa Schulp representing the city of Morgan. And so in two thousand nineteen, we produced some will serve letters for the applicant to be able to use city services even though there are county NDD. And so in that process, our engineer has been working closely with the developer. And Morgan County will make sure that those improvements would be water access that would hook up from five hundred east or Commercial Street that would loop through the subdivision, excuse me, the RV park and on to one hundred south. That would provide water to the, to the RV park. We already have existing power and sewer. Both are very dilapidated and need to be in repair. And so in this process of allowing to have water, we've also asked that those would be upgraded. And those were again reviewed and processed through our engineer. He has gone ahead and gives approval for what was submitted along with the changes that were required by the city. The city does have a few conditions or things that we want put on notice for the applicant. As these are city services, we obviously want them to be city standards. There'll be a water main that will be maintained by the city. So the laterals will still be by the developer and the county. So what we would like to have is a pre-construction meeting. I don't know yet either an invite if the county has a pre-construction meeting or not. I'm not sure how the process will go. If there is not a pre-construction meeting, the city requires one before any, any construction. So we'd like to have either be invited to yours or have one for the city itself. With that, one of the conditions that might help the Larssens and surrounding residences maybe during that, that pre-construction, that we actually have the applicant do a containment plan, submittal for the construction to mitigate the impact that will have around the surrounding residents. And also, we do in the city, because we are more compact, that we do have limited construction hours, meaning usually basically it's seven to five, but you can set those whatever you prefer, again, to mitigate the impact on residents around the area. As far as the infrastructure, the city would recommend that we make sure, well, there will be a requirement that the city does do the inspections on those just to make sure they meet the standards. So the city staff and our engineer will do inspections on all infrastructure. We will only be doing the infrastructure and then the county would be in charge of anything else that's not of that infrastructure. With that in mind, the developer needs to be put on notice that the city, they'll be required to pay the city engineering fees and they'll be billed for that. The other item is, is once they are connected from the city, from both sides so that they are on the city water system, all development requires a one-year warranty period with a ten percent retainer. So whatever the costs are that are required of the developer for the project will have a ten percent bond that needs to be in place for that one year. The only other thing is, is that Morgan City Power will be due, our forum is currently working with the applicant, but again, the developer will need to be put on notice that he'll be paying the cost to have that and will be billed. Other than that, that's what we have. Did you guys have any questions for us?
Not yet.
So seven, seven conditions, city standards for water, pre-construction meeting, a containment plan, construction hours, the city's going to do inspections, pay the engineering fee for the city, and a ten percent bond for a year.
Perfect. Thank you.
I have some questions for staff, but I think I'd like to hear from the applicant just to kind of look at the proposal first. What do you guys think? Can I ask?
I, okay, this is, yeah, for staff. This says a C two in our code.
I think it's a C one.
I think it's C two. And if.
Oh, it is C two.
It might.
It's a C two.
But I think it's appropriate to kick it up to a C three if we feel, correct, that it's.
Given, given the scope and the nature of the relationship between the city and the county, this is, this, I got a lot of questions since you already asked it. And we'll give you a chance to listen to this, but so this is, there's an existing CUP and this is a, an expansion of an existing CUP? No.
All right, hi, everyone. Gina.
Hi Gina.
Hey Gina.
How far are you? This is nine, this is the CUP.
Okay. Okay.
I'm confused about the county, but the city's involved.
Yeah.
For the infrastructure.
Infrastructure, building.
Even though it's county property, yeah, in county.
So why aren't they just doing their own water and their own sewer?
So the city of Morgan is the service provider for basically everything, power, water, sewer.
So the applicant already has water and sewer there.
Sorry, we'll get to it in just a second.
And they already have power and, and sewer currently. And Gina can probably expand on it, but they're right now currently only on a.
I can answer that question, do you?
Yeah, she can answer the water question.
Or sorry, was that Haley that answered that, asked that question?
That was Teresa.
Teresa.
Haley asked.
Teresa, sorry.
Haley asked.
Go ahead.
Do you have any comments on that?
So, yeah, so Haley asked a question, Gina, if you want to expand on the water and that we did a will serve letter, or if you want me to, it's up to you.
Yeah. So the way, when Mark started, and Mark's, sorry, Mark's in the audience, I believe he's one of Grant's representatives. But I know that most history, a group behind this, so one of the reasons why they went to the city to ask for will serve letters was because the cost was pretty much sixes. My husband is here with me. He used to be the Morgan City Water and Sewer guy and started out reviewing this in the beginning of the CUP when it was first committed. And I believe they looked at it, they could have done a tank for water and they could have done, done septic. However, the septic is still, is still close within the floodplain that the county, or the health department probably wouldn't have issued a permit for that. So they went to the city to ask for a will serve letter and the city gave it to them. What it does for the city is it includes the water that lives for them. And my husband could probably explain that a little bit more as far as why they wanted that was close. But another benefit that it gives, the benefit of having that water and sewer into the fairground where the fairground struggles for water pressure because the sewer is all the way at the beginning of the fairground. So it travels a long way to get to the restroom. But it also gives, I believe the county has sewer, right? So the county sewer, the county fairgrounds are on sewer, are, sorry, on septic, on septic system. This gives them the ability, the teenage ability to tie in that water length as well. So to answer your question, it is a benefit to the county to have the city provide the utility.
Okay. Very unusual, this is first. Thanks for clearing that up. But to be clear, there was some discussion that led me to believe that this was some kind of, this is an extension to an existing one. There is no existing conditional use permit. This is brand new, okay?
No, no. The current use, the current use theory is, the current use was the grandfather's use, Como Springs. You know the history of Como, I don't know if you know the history of Como Springs.
Ideally, yeah. I watched a YouTube video right before the meeting today.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I said I watched a YouTube video right before the meeting today to catch up.
Yeah. So yeah, the Como Springs has quite a history. So the, 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 there is current utility in the camp, current campground, but that's the old campground that was in there for a long time. And so that grandfather use continued until they submitted this application and, and so currently.
Thanks for that. That clears it up for me. Okay.
Should we go back whether we want to kick it up to the county commission?
I think we hear the app from the applicant first. Yep. Agreed? Okay, sorry for the delay. You want to come up and?
I probably have more information than he does.
That's okay.
Mine isn't on a.
He wants to talk, he can.
Yeah, mine's too correct.
Yeah, mine's too correct. But this, what started out with this deal about, you know, with Grant being a, a poor neighbor. And when he bought Como Springs back in 2006, 2007, that black area, I don't know if you knew about it, it was a dump. That was everybody went and dropped their hidden trash, their refrigerators, their stack of tires that nobody wanted. They didn't want to take anywhere. So Grant came in and cleaned that all up, cleaned everything out of it. He tore down the dilapidated buildings. So yeah, there's a stack of tires. Those tires were bare. So I mean, he came in, cleaned up, flattened everything out, dredged out a pond that was, it was nothing but a slime pit because it was so shallow. And so he went to clean that up. And yes, there were pumps on that property to suck out all that water while he was trying to dredge it out. And those pumps would run during the day. They were just a normal pump. And then at night, mysteriously, they were turned off multiple times. So that place was fed.
I appreciate the feedback. Let's just keep it.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm saying, but Grant, you know, he says it's been, you know, so many years, but for the last four years, you know, you guys have seen, he's been working, he can go, he's, he's gone as far as he can go. So yes, it looks like nothing's being done right now, but for four years and hundreds of thousands of dollars, he's been here with, with his plans and trying to get this thing moving forward. So yes, but I guess my point is, is Grant, he is a good neighbor and he's trying to do everything to make this work for Morgan County and bring in the tax benefits and the tourism that, that this will bring in. And the best example is if you go down 89 towards, towards Riverdale, on the right side of the road there, they put in a brand-new campground right next to a brand-new subdivision and it looks great. So this is something, I understand that his house is right above it, but, and there's going to be dirt, there's going to be noise. Same thing like built his house, there's going to be that up there. And but the, the trade-off of when this is done, it's going to look absolutely gorgeous. So that's what he'll be looking down upon, but Grant has done everything he can and hasn't given up on this. It's just been held up at, at this stage. I don't know if, you know, I'm sure, you know, how long you guys have all been, been seeing this, but it's been here a lot for like say four years now.
Yeah, I don't know anything about that. I appreciate you answering the question. What's your relationship to the, to Grant then? Are you, are you representing the project?
Yeah, I'm partners with Grant.
Okay.
So are you guys aware of the conditions that the city has before today?
Yes, and this is, these years, Mike's right here.
So, yeah, Mark Pooner is a business partner with Grant. But yes, I guess wasn't really prepared to present. Gina probably could go into the depth of it. But generally, what we're trying to do is just bring back Como Springs and to what it was originally intended for, you know, the campground, the cabins there. So the construction plans or, I guess, approval plans were split into Phase One and a Phase Two. Phase One would be just the RV site and tent area and the infrastructure to serve the RV sites and the restrooms there and the road, you know, the surface improvements. Let's see here. And then Phase Two, we've got, there's some cabins to go in for like rental type deal. And then Phase Three would be to build a restaurant and have, you know, the shared, agreement to have somebody run the restaurant, kitchen through there. So...
Good. Quick, quick question. So the preparation work, the excavation, I guess, for like, that's been going on, that was done under an excavation permit with the county or something?
So that was done with a flood permit, I believe it was, with Lance Evans?
Ah, he's been here 14 days.
Yeah. There was a flood, for the excavation for the pond, there was a flood permit.
Okay, so that was a whole, that was a whole separate thing you were excavating in preparation?
That was a separate thing.
And it's just important for us to keep it, the, the thing separate. There wasn't, there was something going on in excavation. What we have before us here is an application for a condition of use permit. We just got to keep focused on the application.
So in this will, the landscaping, once we get all done, will remedy the spoils that were created on the 100 South Road. Yeah, if you scroll down, great. So we're going to put in a new access, 36-foot road access for 100 South. All that material that got dredged and placed on that hillside, hillside, was evaluated by the geotechnical engineer and was suitable to build the road on. And then we'll be adding, you know, we're going to put wild grass seed there upon finishing construction. And we've got a SWIP plan. I don't know, it's really isn't going, to be going into all that, but there is a SWIP plan with dust control. The contractor will be held accountable to follow with the Utah State Dust Control. And so yeah, there was flood plain, there was a lot of work done with the county and the city with Lance and Matt Harvest thing to ensure that we're, you know, dealing with the sewer manholes and the water lines. We're following all the flood, flood plain deals, ordinances, I guess. And yeah, if you want to, you scroll down to the site plan. But I guess for the planning commission, you know, we're just, we're meeting the bumper zone. We show the bumper zone, it's a very large site. The road, I don't know, it's kind of hard to see, but the road in, comes in and there's the existing warehouse there. That's, will be part of Phase One. And we're going to put in a new box culvert to cross the ditch canal, coordinate with the canal company, gotten their approval to construct that. And then we cross to the north, what is that, northwest into the RV site area. There's like 67 RV sites coming in with two bathrooms. There will be a bathroom for the tent site and RV sites. And then there's an existing steel bridge that will be a one-way, in and out, well, it's not one-way, but one deal of traffic can get through it. It's the old bridge that's there. We look into installing a new bridge and there was some talk with the county economic team, I guess, to look at doing a bridge to cross there, a joint venture of some sort. For this time, we're just trying to get Phase One improvements done and then, you know, move forward with Phase Two, with the cabin area. We did a landscape plan. It's not, we don't have it in the packet, but we, can you pull up Base Camp? If you want to look at it? I don't know if you guys want me to, how, definitely want to go through, but this is the concept, I guess we can go with what we have here. This is the concept of, you know, the buildings that Grant wants to do. Just, you know, two, three-bedroom cottages. That was, these plans were like when we first submitted, even, there was a little lack of communication getting the updated elevations, I guess, the building elevations. But Grant just wants to put in, you know, have sidewalks only into there, so it'll be like a little cottage. And then in the future, have the restaurant and a little shop and whatnot, kind of like a resort. Like they said, they believe it will bring in quite the economic tax revenue and tourism. So, but I'm just a civil engineer. I design pipes, not present about this stuff, so.
No, that's fine.
Well, I have a question. So maybe Mark, the main entrance will be 100 South or the 500 East?
Main entrance is going to be up on Hill.
100 South will be the main.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, that, my question, what was the main entrance? And then the second thing is, in your narrative, you talk about a 45, the restaurant being 45 feet tall, but this is an 820 zone, so it should be 35 feet and be the max.
And that's fine. Yeah, that's not a problem. Like I said, the buildings and everything else are just, you know, right now, there's still a lot of discussion on what's going to go on with that.
That'll come up.
Just in your narrative, I just...
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll come with building permit.
Yeah.
See, like I said, this one, right now, this is just strictly for the campground area.
Yeah, the condition of use permit is for the entire property. So what has been presented to you in your packet is just renovation? This is not going to be the final product?
Right. We're just talking uses.
Right.
Okay, so there were seven from the county and I think that captured business hours of operation for construction was something that was mentioned.
Uh, city standards for water, oh, for the county or the city?
For the city, excuse me.
Uh, the inspections, the fees, bonds, pre-construction meeting.
Okay. I know it's, there's also another proposed condition for, that, that they meet all the other code regulations, et cetera. Is it worth mentioning lighting specifically? Because we do have, I mean, that implies that they have to meet Morgan County code for lighting. Do we want to talk about business hours?
We need to talk about number three. In the code, it says that they can stay up to 90 days.
90 days under.
Per spot, not 90 days per calendar year or 45 days per calendar year.
That's what our code, yeah.
So that needs to be changed to 90.
Well, we don't need to say anything.
Well, then it needs to be taken out?
Yes, that's what I mean.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering about that, that number four, the campground here's all of the county, state and federal requirement. Is that specific enough? I mean, or do we want to talk about specific mitigation standards? Specific standards that we can apply?
One thing to note, Gary, I'm trying to raise my hand, but, one thing to note on the city standards, the request for city standards, the hours of construction, the city, or the county conditional use standard calls out that they have, that they have to have, meet the county requirement for construction hours. I will have to look at the code for that.
So do you guys feel that that's, number four encompasses it? Hours, things like that, hours of construction. There's a concern from, you know, for the public about...
Hours of operation.
Yeah, hours of operation, what's the, what's the construction phase going to be like? There's also a concern about people leaving the RV park and going on to private residences. Is there any way to mitigate those concerns with the current standard, with an existing standard?
The issue, I don't know if there would be, it's a pretty steep hill to reach resident properties. So I mean, on the riverside, it's a county property. On the other side, on 100 South, campers will have to climb up this steep hill. It's almost unable to be able to be climbed, so in order to get on those properties. I mean, yeah, they can go up 100 South, but they can access a lot of other properties as well.
They can go up the road.
Yeah, they can just walk up the road. Okay, just trying to address every, every concern to see if we can, if there's a way to mitigate it.
Sure.
Lighting's already covered in our code, so that's going to be covered in that. So we got hours of operation. What else was brought up during public comment?
Well, the dust control, that was addressed. Animals, animals liability, we'll keep, be able, yeah, bring their, yeah, their dogs.
Are you gonna, I mean, is it going to have not CCR, but the other camp rules, I assume?
It already has camp rules that restrict breeds.
That what?
Restrict breeds.
The campground has rules, existing rules that restrict breed of dogs. It is, and dogs all have to be on a leash.
The default rules. Okay, what rules are you talking about? What campground?
The Como Springs campground.
Well, this, won't this condition use permit supersede those rules?
Um, well, are you, are you talking about the, the type of, I mean, those will stay in existence even after CUP. I'm confused as to what your question is, I guess.
They will, so the, the campground rules for the existing use will stay in effect for the proposed CUP? That's what you're saying?
Yes. So I can email those to Josh and he can send them out to you or you can look them up online. They're online currently. But yeah, they'll go in, this was a request by, by Grant to put a breed restriction on. We have had dogs in the past that, that have attacked kids. And so we had to put restrictions in place or otherwise restrict dogs altogether. But a lot of campers like to bring their dogs. So we do require dogs to be on a leash and pit bulls, Yelnamans, foxes, those types of dogs are not allowed in the campground. There are restrictions. Most campgrounds have breed restrictions.
You can add, you can add that private agreement as a civet.
I think we need to...
But it's not our responsibility to enforce.
No, we're just, I'm just curious what the link is between, I just don't see the, if we don't add it as a condition or put it in a motion, I don't see the link between the existing and the future.
You can just add stipulation or condition in that the campground maintains...
Maintains existing rules.
Rules and regulations. They need changed, they need to bring it to the table.
Okay. One more question on that then. So when we're talking about enforcement, I get that the county's not going to be enforcing their campground rules, but under construction hours, things like that, the county is the one that oversees that. Just to let the public know how that, how that works. So that, that would be you, right?
That would be me.
Yeah. So any complaints for that kind of stuff goes to Josh and then, then Josh mitigates, addresses those?
Right. So our current code has a section called performance standards for all conditional uses. And these are things that they are required to do. And then down below, there's a section, general standards for conditional use permits. And this section contains additional items that you can add in, ask conditions if you so desire.
Yeah, and those are the ones that we've considered, but, but, so, help me if I'm wrong, but I think what we've said is the, the generic conditions for condition use permits that we have in code will mitigate the things that we've discussed and brought up, that we're covering and we're saying these standards will, will cover that. Anybody?
Well, they have standards, but we can have conditions regarding those standards, yes.
Is there anything in addition to the generic ones? Do you feel like we need to apply to mitigate any public safety concerns or light or noise or dust or anything else? What do you, what do you think? Do you think we captured it?
I don't think we need to double include them if they're already included in item four.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't see anything in the standards table, the extra standards table that we need to, I just, am I, do you guys see anything else? Okay. Now there's, so the next question is the C2 versus C3 discussion. What, what are you guys thinking on that? Sorry, it's our turn. I apologize. I apologize, this is the way we have to do it now. We're in our discussion right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Am I allowed to ask them?
No, ma'am, I thought, sorry. We'll try and, we'll try and get your questions answered during our discussion, but.
So the C2 does allow you to forward.
So we would, if, if we did do that, given the nature and scope and unusual service provider by Morgan City, if we did decide to do that, we would still make a recommendation?
You would make a recommendation and approval to that?
Okay.
With, if it's for approval with the additional stipulations that you want to have.
Okay. So thoughts on that?
Um, I'm torn. It is, like, it is a large product, a large project.
Very much so.
But we also look at more of the details than they do, I would say. Like, we look at it at a higher level. So, part of me feels like, yeah, pass it to them because it is such a big project in the county, and it will have a lot of impact on the county, like the revenue and taxes and all that stuff. And part of me is, like, we've got it taken care of, but.
That's it?
I think so, as she says, but I think, I mean, we've done the work here and figured it out, and so you provide that to the commission so that they understand and then they can have the say if there's, they think that would be a wise thing to do.
More eyes, the better.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with, I have no problem kicking at the commission.
Okay, sounds like consensus, isn't it?
Yeah, that was my thought, too, just more eyes, more people looking at it.
Okay, so the motion, consider what that motion would sound like, then.
We'll just forward a recommendation, positive recommendation.
Just change it to forward recommendation. Does that sound right, Jeff?
You have forward a positive recommendation with the seven stipulations added by the city and then any additional stipulations that you want to add.
Okay.
Which is only one we have, is the private agreement, and we're striking three, right? Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we forward a positive recommendation to the county commission for Como Springs Resort Conditional Use Permit Application 21.014, located at 805 East Como Springs Road, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report with the following changes. Strike number three, add in a condition that a private agreement for camper rules will be submitted as a.
Exhibit?
Exhibit. And do I need to list out all seven from the city?
Yes.
And that the city conditions be included in the CUP. That the CUP meets city standards for water, that there is a pre-construction meeting or that the city is invited to a pre-construction meeting, that the applicant provide a containment plan for construction, that the applicant provide construction hours or hours of operation, that the city will be doing all.
Wait just a minute.
The city already did the hours.
Yeah, the city already gave the hours.
Five to seven, or seven to five?
No, they said that that's what they normally are, but that they wanted city hours in it.
So I would say the seven to five and not have the applicant determine.
Okay, that the hours of operation are seven to five, that the city conduct all inspections.
Of infrastructure.
Of infrastructure, that the applicant pay the city's engineering fees, and that the applicant provides a ten percent bond for one year.
To the city.
To the city.
To the city.
So, just a quick question on those motions before we second it, so, well, no, go ahead and someone, someone can second it.
I'll second it.
Okay, got a question on it. So, in this case, the infrastructure deeded to the city or the county, since it's in the county?
Well, the infrastructure will be owned by the city, it will be dedicated to the water.
Be dedicated to the city.
Yeah, my understanding is the water line will be owned and operated by the city.
Yeah.
So with the, I guess, agreement, the, the water will be owned by the city, there'll be an easement through the campground, and the sewer is currently private and it will be, stay private, it picks up on 500 South, and then the electrical, there'll be main lines and the mains will be owned by the city, Morgan City Power.
Okay.
And then, like, everything outside of the trans, or the meter, box, transformer will be owned and maintained by the campground.
Okay. Just need one clarification, thanks for that. Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion, we have a second to bro. Go ahead.
Sorry, I just have a question, a clarification on that. Is, as far as infrastructure, your inspections on just the things that were mentioned here and not the roads and so forth, correct? They're not going to be inspecting the roads? I just want to clarify, do the county.
Water and sewer.
Yeah, just.
Should just be water and sewer?
Yes, water and sewer infrastructure.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion, second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So on to the county commission on that one. All right, item number twelve, area plan update work session. This is where everybody gets to stay and really, this is where we get into the real good. Thank you.
Thank you.
At the last meeting, you had asked for a little bit of training for the upcoming area plan committees, and so I put together kind of some ideas that you might want to keep in mind as you hold your committee meetings for the separate areas. So since the area plans are fairly old, if I remember correctly, and you're going to be updating, rewriting them, you might want to address the boundaries themselves. As development has occurred, those boundaries may need to be expanded or, or reduced, but it should be based on, on your committee members.
I have a question about that. How can we just expand it or reduce it? Because doesn't every part have to be part of the boundary?
Right, so the area plans is they are going to be rewritten, are going to have to be readopted, so as you readopt.
So we could change the boundary, then?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it'll go through the rewrite or the, the update process, and it'll have to be readopted.
So what if I take some machines? Does his group and my group have to agree on that?
I might want to work it out.
Okay.
Yeah, but that'll be up to you and your committees to determine how you want to handle that.
I like to think that that's going to be much of an issue personally, but.
When you meet with the committees, there's a few things you might want to try to work out with your committee members. The needs of the area, the areas of those area plans that could support growth. Typically, a city or a community that's not growing is dying, so I know that there's a prevalent that no growth, but you should push your committee members to expand and try to consider some areas that could accept economic, some economic development of some I would also suggest that you, you create a SWOT of the area itself, which is the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Yep, those are very helpful to help you understand kind of where the area is generally, the points that you can expand on and kind of focus on, and how to mitigate some of those weaknesses and threats.
So these are for, not for, this is for everything except for Peterson and Mountain Green, so since we've got those grants, right, in place. And these are, I missed last meeting, so just jumping back a little bit.
No problem.
Are you guys heading up, you're, everybody's heading up their prospective area plan? Okay, so we've got resources here to help you as well. We don't want to throw you into the fire and just say good luck. We can, we can certainly come alongside you and get a whiteboard out, and you know how much I love that.
For sure.
I'd love to do a SWOT with you guys for your areas.
Well, staff can also help you by attending or.
Yeah.
Acting as secretaries or whatever you want us to do.
We actually like this kind of.
She's shaking her head.
You'll love it, it'll be great.
Secretary enough.
Something for your resume.
Well, maybe if we get the new planner, they can help out.
Yeah.
Might be good.
What could go wrong? I'm sure you'll go in.
Yep, I didn't want to put together actual questions for you, since I'm new and you understand the areas a lot better than I do right now. If you want, I can help you draft the questions or word them so that they're, you know, unbiased, open-ended. You want to try to avoid yes or no questions. Those questions are quite polarizing and they create a lot of contention and they can cause problems on a survey. So what you want to do is you want to have open-ended questions that get the committee members to discuss, open up, talk about the things that they don't want versus the things that they do want. You should also make sure that the questions you do ask gauge the adequate, that there's adequate goals, objectives, and action statements to help with the implementation of the plans, because there's no plan that's more worthless than something that sits on a desk and never does anything. So in order to do that, you want to look at things like land, land uses, circulation, utilities, public facilities and resources, water is a big one. You might want to kind of talk about that and ask questions that'll get the committee members talking about those things. Implementation and evaluation of the plan, there should be, I don't know if there's a section in there right now because I haven't gone through the plans yet, but there should be an implementation and evaluation section of each of those area plans. The implementation would include the goals, the objectives, and the action statements, whereas the evaluation would have the committee or the planning commission review those plans on an annual or biannual basis, where you would look at what's working and what's not working, and then change it accordingly. And then you have to remember that those plans, somebody's got to update them, so the things that you discuss and write down and you work out with your committee members, you need to remember that it's either going to be staff that's going to be drafting and updating those plans accordingly, or consultants. So it just needs to be clear what, what you want changed and how you want to change. And then if there's any additional training or comments or questions, or you want staff to attend, those committee members just let me know. Any questions or comments?
This is awesome.
How many people have applied?
Four.
Four total?
Four total. Has anybody shared it on Facebook?
I did. On our Starlight Connections.
Okay, first off, to you guys, I'll have Facebook. If you could share.
Debbie tells me it's on there.
On a year involved in that pertain to Morgan, so we can get the word out a little bit more. That would be helpful.
Anybody from mine?
No.
Oh, crap.
I had two from Outland, one that came in for Enterprise, but it was a blank application. And then one for Richwell and Fortville.
Clay Rich and who else?
No, it's Lance Crowther and DeJass.
Yeah.
My guess is Clay probably hasn't got the word.
Yeah, because he wanted to do it.
Oh, he knows. He's, he's met with Josh since.
So he, he knows about submitting the application?
He should.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you guys get the word out a little bit more, even if you just tell your passing neighbor, hey, spread the word and get it out to people that don't have Facebook or don't have.
Wasn't we making it the end of July for application?
Yeah, the twenty-eighth.
About two weeks.
Yeah. It's not voting long.
How about, how about you guys?
Any other questions?
This is, this is very good, you're bringing tears to my eyes. Welcome, I didn't get a chance to meet you last meeting, this is.
Oh, gosh.
I like this a lot. Item number thirteen, business staff questions. What's coming up?
Confirmed, we have, I think, just two. We postponed one of the ones tonight to the twenty-eighth, right? So three, I think, total, I'm not one hundred percent sure what's going to be ready, so.
I've seen some of the base camps, there's some idea, but.
Yeah. We've hit a lull in applications and those, which is okay.
So having said that, is there anything that we need to pick back up if we have any time during the meetings? We got July coming, next meeting is twenty-eighth, that's.
Training.
We haven't had open meetings.
We've been, we've had it, we had it on the dead of the first couple of.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Never got to it, so.
Who's gonna, who are we inviting in for that? We're going to do it online, or?
Online.
Yeah, it's online, we'll just do it on projector.
Okay.
You guys can bring in your tablets or whatever to complete the test.
We'll just give you our login, and you can log into each one, we'll answer the questions for you. I'm just teasing. Do you want to do that next time if there's only three? We, we do have to get it down, and we got till December thirty-first, I don't know what the rush is, but.
I'll look over how many applications we have on the agenda for next, and then if not, yeah.
Any code stuff we've been pushing back that we just got to keep track of? No? Okay. We've just, it sounds, seems like we've been so busy with applications, I mean, it's weird we haven't done any.
Just code improvement or planning stuff for.
Yeah.
And for me, I won't be here on the, the next meeting.
Okay.
Oh, I won't either. Oh, wait, hold on. No, I'll be here, I'm leaving the next day. I'll be here.
Okay. Okay, no, anything, anything for us?
Okay.
All right. Have you already got all the inputs for last minute?
Yep, I got Gummy's corrections and Haley's corrections.
Okay, do you have Dustin's?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so having said that, we have a motion to approve. So moved.
Okay.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Aye.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Awesome, the meeting is adjourned. That happened very quick, but.
You just.
Thank you, everyone.